Trustee Baker.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Dodd. Uh, trustee Kishinov.
Here.
Trustee De Luna, I see is absent for the moment, and I see student trustee Giovanni Alejandro Martinez is also absent. Um, trustee Olson.
Here.
And trustee Iverson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next is item two point three land acknowledgement. As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded, traditional, ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwok, Katwun, were composed of three federally recognized tribes, the Kausho Dehi, Band of Windtoon Indians of the Kalusa Indian Community, the Kletzel Dehi Band of Windtoon Indians, and the Yotchad Nihi Windtoon Nation, and Wapo, including the Mesewa Wapo, also known as the Onostaxi Peoples. As part of Napa Valley's college mission of preparing students for evolving roles in a diverse, dynamic, and interdependent world, and in accordance with college's values of honesty, integrity, inclusivity, and respect for others, we make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated against indigenous people, the land, and water. May we hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity and in action to seek equity and justice with Miwok, Katwun, and Wapo peoples. Next is item two point four, expulsion of the agenda. Uh, is there any changes to the agenda? None. There is. Eliminating.
We are pulling item four point two.
To. Public comment, okay. Uh, all right, any other changes? Hearing the land, we will move to our opening session. Uh, actually, is Mr. Azaveto here? Mr. Azaveto, um, would you like to do this in open or closed session? Okay. Uh, is there any other public comment not related to this? Adam?
No, and I just gave you the cards.
Okay. So I do have speakers. So good afternoon, one properly placed matter on today's prosection agenda, public complete. Just going to dispense or release pursuant to Brown Act, Government Code Section fifty-five, nine, five, seven subdivision D one. Also pursuant to the Brown Act, Government Code Section fifty-four, nine, fifty-seven subdivision D two, employees given. Notice that those matter have been placed on prosection in another regular meeting scheduling for today, and an opportunity to request matter instead be heard in open session during the time period on each agenda dedicated to open meeting, public comment on closed session items. Um, so I've been informed by Mr. Azaveto that we're requesting to be heard in open session. That's stated now. Um. Before we begin, I'll take a few moments to explain the process that we'll use to conduct this open session item. Under the Brown Act, an employee may request that key things, charges be heard in open session. When such a request is made, we are required to hear in open session the complaints or charges that we would otherwise have heard in closed session. Therefore, we will hear from Eileen O'Hair Anderson, the district council, on the factual basis for the district's recommendation in open session. The employee will have an opportunity to speak. Then Ms. O'Hair Anderson will present the district argument. That will end the public consideration of the charges. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter may then speak, subject to boards' usual procedures for hearing public comment. After public comments, the board will give to closed sessions deliberations. The board will make its decision on closed session. So open session proceeding. Ms. O'Hair Anderson, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. Uh, this is a factual summary of the allegations in the notice of discipline and then a brief procedural summary of the background of this matter. Uh, I'll return in a minute to give you the district's legal and factual arguments. Uh, on April twenty-first, two thousand and two, the Napa Valley Community College District Police Department received a report that Mr. Azaveto and another custodian had left campus for several hours, uh, to go to a local bar. Uh, upon returning, uh, the department was informed that there was an altercation with an unhoused person uh, near the edge of campus, and that Mr. Azaveto and the other custodian were involved in throwing a rock at the unhoused person and yelling at, at him, and that there was an altercation. The next day, a, a district police officer saw Mr. Azaveto and the other custodian walking down the stairs near the two thousand building near the, the health center. Uh, Mr. Azaveto was holding a, a silver colored Coors Light beer can. Uh, he saw the officer, he turned around, moved toward the parking lot, out of the officer's sight for a moment, and then returned without the beer can in his hand. Uh, the police officer approached Mr. Azaveto, told him they'd received a report that he had been off campus, uh, at a local bar. Mr. Azaveto denied that, uh, he had been off campus, denied he had been at a bar. Uh, and during this altercation, the officer noticed that Mr. Azaveto had trouble following his very simple statements. He wasn't following along. Uh, he also noticed he was, uh, slurring his speech and, and had other indications of, of having consumed alcohol or being intoxicated. Uh, Mr. Azaveto became combative and aggressive with the officer. He raised his hands to the officer, uh, said the officer should quote, "do a test," close quote. Uh, he said he, uh, Mr. Azaveto said he did not like being roughed up by a police officer who has a gun so he can shoot his, pardon my language, fucking ass, what the fuck is going on? Mr. Azaveto said, "I don't understand where you're coming from. I'm walking here, going to lunch, and then all of a sudden, I'm a what? I'm a drunk? A drunk? I'm this, I'm that." Uh, Mr. Azaveto accused the officer of calling him a drunk, told him to stop fucking with him. The officer explained he was just sharing the report that the police department had received. Uh, Mr. Azaveto continued to raise his voice and shouted, "This is bullshit, this whole thing is bullshit." Continuing to shout profanities at the police officer and walking away from the police officer, waving his arms in the air and continuing to shout. All of this interaction was on the officer's body worn camera. Uh, after the, he finished the conversation, the police officer walked down toward the end of the walkway near where Mr. Uh, Azaveto had disappeared from view for a moment, uh, and he found a Coors Light beer can on the ground there. Uh. Mr. Reeves was called to campus, he arrived, he and the officer, uh, approached Mr. Azaveto and spoke to him. Uh, Mr. Reeves asked, could you call someone to come help Mr. Azaveto come home? Because he couldn't drive in his present condition. Mr. Azaveto became angry, asked Vice President Reeves to perform a, a drug test, denied drinking. Uh, asked Mr., as I said, asked Vice President Reeves to perform a drug test, accused Mr. Reeves of calling him a fucking drunk, raised his voice, was waving his hands in Vice President Reeves's general direction, accused, uh, Vice President Reeves of taking advantage of him and trying to get him to retire. Uh, he said he thought he had been there long enough and that the uh, district had treated me like shit for twelve fucking years of my life and never give me a raise. You're going to, you're going to fuck with me now? Uh, Mr. Reeves tried to de-escalate the situation. Uh, in the end, Mr. Azaveto walked away from Mr. Reeves, still yelling, uh, profanities such as, "This is bullshit, this whole shit is bullshit." As a result of all of this behavior and his observations, the police officer concluded that Mr. Azaveto was intoxicated. Uh, based on the presence of Coors Light, he had the behavior, the slurred speech, the, uh, very aggressive and belligerent, animated, um, yelling, uh, and the fact that he was having, Mr. Azaveto was having trouble following very simple statements from the officer. Uh, a few days later, uh, Vice President Alron and Mr. Reeves met with Mr. Azaveto and a union representative. Initially, Mr. Azaveto claimed he did not recall the incident, did not recall holding a beer can, did not recall the entire conversation with uh, Vice President Reeves and the police officer. Uh, he caucused and stepped out of the room to speak with his union rep, and then only then came back and admitted he had an awful problem and requested treatment. Um, the district then conducted an investigation into the extent of the misconduct. Um, after the investigation was complete, the district prepared and served a charge packet, a disciplinary packet on Mr. Azaveto. Uh, we engaged in the required due process, including pre-deprivation due process. Uh, under the collective bargaining agreement, appeals, uh, well, excuse me, let me step, I skipped a step. Um, we engaged in the required due process. Uh, the district made a, a decision to proceed with the termination. That took place on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, under the bargaining agreement, appeals of discipline are heard to and adjust the three-person adjustment board. Uh, we selected the district's representatives, the union selected their representative. The third party, the neutral party, is selected by the state mediation and conciliation service. Uh, we scheduled the hearing. Uh, there was a slight delay in the hearing because the arbitrator became ill on the eve of the day we were originally set to hear the matter. We rescheduled, that caused some delay. Um, the hearing was conducted August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, each side, after the hearing, submitted written, uh, briefs, written arguments. Uh, then the, uh, adjustment board issued its recommendation to this board on December first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the recommendation was not unanimous, there was a dissent from one of the board members. And the question before you tonight is whether to accept the, uh, recommendation from the adjustment board or not. Was there questions?
Could you tell us a little bit more about the dissent? About who, who, what, what's kind of the group they were on?
I will, I am, I intend to do that when I return and set forth the district's legal arguments. This was, uh, intended just to be the factual basis for the discipline and procedural background.
Sorry. Counsel, you talked, it was a, a understanding, I guess, from the factual basis of, uh, that Mr. Azaveto was offsite at a bar, just, where, where did that information come about?
That was a, a report that was given to the police department, uh, by an employee on campus.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Azaveto, would you like to address the board? And if.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, um, sometimes, you know, you don't, you don't realize you have a problem and till something happens and, you know, you need help. And you don't know that you need help, but you need help. I was lucky enough to, um, go to my healthcare provider and get the help I needed. And, um, I stand here today, six hundred and thirty-two days sober. Um, I'm sorry about this, and I apologize to anybody. Um, just really sorry, and, um, ready to come back to work. So, you, you agree with the advisory panel and, and give me a second chance? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Azaveto. Uh, the board may now ask any clarifying questions. I'll start with, we'll just go down, starting on Rios, if you have any kind of move in that direction. Trustee Baker, Trustee Dodd. Trustee Kishinov.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting to hear the defense and what else. I, I don't have any questions until that.
If I may, trustee Iverson, perhaps this is the appropriate time for me to put forth the district's legal and factual arguments, if I may?
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Um, so the issue before, pardon me. For the, the, uh, adjustment board, uh, was very simple, and it set out in the, uh, in the decision, the recommendation from the advisory board, and it is this. Was the discharge for cause? And if not, what is the appropriate remedy? The union stated it slightly differently, but it's essentially the same statement. Did the district have cause to terminate Mr. Azaveto without progressive discipline? Uh, the adjustment board found six of the seven charges that were, uh, alleged against Mr. Azaveto were proven. Uh, in fact, Mr. Azaveto admitted many of the charges, and, and I'd like you to look, you have, you have for your consideration reporter's transcript. I'd like you to look at pages one twenty-eight to one thirty-one of the reporter's transcript. In there, Mr. Azaveto admits his conduct, he admits that his behavior was inappropriate. He admits, let me get it for me. He admits that was him on the, the body cam video. He admits he used profanity. He admits he was discourteous. He admits his conduct violated the collective bargaining agreement. He admits he was unfit to perform his duties of custodian. Uh. When asked if he thought it would have been, then safe for him to continue working, he said, "I don't know, I don't know how to answer to that, answer that, because I don't think I would harm myself if that's what you mean." But not, not addressing, he would be working with dangerous chemicals, he might be working with heavy machi, heavy machinery. Um. He admits he would have driven home had he been left alone that night. Uh, he admits all of these charges. Uh, the one charge that the, uh, so let me, let me back up. The charges that the board found were proven were unauthorized for excessive absences, discourteous, offensive, or disruptive or abusive conduct, dishonesty, drunkenness on duty, incompetence or negligent, uh, uh, neglect of duty. Uh. The one that was not found to be, uh, oh, excuse me, and evident unfitness for duty, that was found to be, that proven. The one that was not proven was lawful or persistent violation of, of board policies. All the others were proven. And all of those are sufficient to support and justify Mr. Azaveto's termination. The issue here is not simply drinking on duty, though Lord knows that alone is enough to justify termination. But there was also his absence from duty, there was his, uh, dishonesty uh, in his interactions with the police officer and with Vice President Reeves. Uh, there was his foul language, aggressive behavior, uh, all, all of which the, uh, adjustment board found to be proven. Um. The one thing that the adjustment, the majority of the adjustment board found, uh, and the reason they found the way they did was, they thought that it was a reasonable accommodation uh, under the, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, to allow Mr. Azaveto to return. However, that is an incorrect reading of the ADA and the state corollary of the Fair Employment and Housing Act, because the ADA addresses from the PHA address accommodations in the workplace. They do not address mis, uh, appropriate discipline for misconduct in the workplace. And that's what we were addressing here, the appropriate discipline for misconduct in the workplace. Uh, the recommendation, in addition, um, to violate the education code, uh, it, the recommendation is that Mr. Azaveto be returned uh, as a probationary employee, which is not permitted under the education code. Once an employee has attained permanence, you can't take the, take the permanence away except through a disciplinary action such as we have here. You can't put him back as a probationary employee. Uh, the district had, uh, appropriate cause to discipline, the discipline here was appropriate. Uh, to adopt the majority of the discipline, uh, excuse me, of the adjustment board's uh, recommendation would be to allow Mr. Azaveto to escape any consequences at all for his behavior. Uh, here, the district was justified in the termination. The district clearly had cause to terminate, and we would urge the board to uphold, uh, the discipline and sustain the termination. There are any questions?
Right.
I just had a question about the timeline. Um, so this originally occurred in April twenty-two, correct? And then there was something that happened in September twenty-two, what was that?
That was the termination. The termination became effective September fourteenth, twenty-two.
So, uh, at what point did, uh, the employee become in a non-paid status with the determination?
He has been in paid status.
He has been in paid status this entire time, but has he at any time since April been actually on the job?
Actually been.
On the job? Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, he said he's, he's on paid status now? Um. The recommendation was to reinstate him as a probationary employee, but that is prohibited?
Correct.
Can you explain that a little bit?
The, the recommendation from the adjustment board is to, uh, reinstate Mr. Azaveto as a probationary employee and to put him on what's called a last chance agreement. Uh, and the, the recommendation is, is in the materials provided to you. Um, the, the last chance agreement part of that is permissible, and while it's not necessarily best practice, that it's legally permissible for a classified employee. Uh, but you, once a classified employee becomes a permanent classified employee, you can't undo that permanence, you can't return him to a probationary status. That's simply not permitted by the code.
I, I have another question, I'm sorry, about the adjustment board. That was comprised of three, a district people and three union people?
No, there was one dis, one district appointee, one union appointee, and then a third neutral arbitrator who was appointed by, uh, striking off a list we received from state media, the state agency.
And they're, and they, and their collective, all three of them, are recommending this last chance?
Two of them, two of the three, a, a majority make that recommendation. The third, uh, provided a dissent.
Okay. But the third said, no last chance?
The third said, sustain the termination, no last chance. My words, obviously, that was a paraphrase.
Great. And so how, how would that work if you, if you are prohibited from returning, returning him to temporary status, erasement status, but they, they tell you to do it anyway, so how does that work?
That's a good question, trustee, I don't, I don't know how that would work.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Just have, uh, one, now you said there was a difference between the return on a probationary status, what was the last chance that you said was legal but not a best practice or?
So the, uh, a last chance agreement in general is a, an agreement that both the district and the employee enter into that says some version of the employee must be on best behavior for a certain period of time, and any violation, if sustained, any violation of work rules and code, timeline, whatever, uh, would be grounds for termination.
Thank you.
In, in that circumstance, if there is, say, for instance, uh, the employee was to return to work under that circumstance, and then there was a violation of any kind, are we then kicked back into this whole there has to be a board, there has to be, or is it you've done it, you're done?
Lawyers disagree about that. Uh, I think the, the wiser course and the more, uh, legally prudent course is that there has to be some level of due process even after a last chance agreement. It may be more, uh, reduced, uh, due process than in your bargaining agreement, but there has to be some kind of proof that there was in fact a violation.
Are we permitted to ask questions of Mr. Azaveto?
You can ask questions, yeah. Yeah. Go.
Like, what, I'm, I'm not quite following everything, so CJV already addressed, addressed this. I think I'm following everything, but slowly, um. Had there been, there was other unauthorized absences, so had there been other disciplinary actions or um, complaints or however?
There, there had not been any, uh, discipline that had risen to the level of something placed in his personnel file.
Understood.
I'm sorry, when, what was the date of the, the last incident where he was caught with the, the, here?
Uh, April twenty-second, I believe, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay, thank you. I think that's, I'm.
You have questions for Mr. Azaveto?
No, I, I think I figured it out.
Okay, so any other questions from the board? So, at this point, we will now hear from public comment, if any, on this matter. I do have two, three, four, or five speaker cards. I don't know if there's anyone else that missed one, but in no particular order. Michael Rayford.
Hello, everybody, uh, my name's Michael Rayford, I'm the lead custodian here at the campus, and I've known Joe since I started here at Napa Valley College. And I've never seen him get angry at any students or anybody else. So. Um. I just hope that you guys see in your heart that he actually bettered himself because he was going through some family issues too at the same time. And you gotta remember, that was COVID, and we were working alone at the same time on the campus, without a manager, without a supervisor. So I just wanted you guys to know that whatever he did, I think he's learned his lesson, and we're here to support him and help him with whatever he needs. And that's all I wanted to say. Um, he's a good man, good family. He's a good man, good family man. And I just want you guys to know that. And
Thank you, Michael. Deborah?
Good evening, board. My name is Deborah Beachtree. I worked with Joe pretty much the whole time. He was here. I worked five years longer than him. Joe is a very, very good worker, a team player, and does anything that he's requested to do on his job. He's fair and always willing to give a helping hand, working overtime if needed, back in the day, all of the good stuff. Very cordial with everybody I know and everybody that has worked around Joe. Coworkers as a team, because I am now retired. But as a team, we got along very well. And I think that you dismissing Joe at this time would be bad on your part because Joe is a very, very good worker on time and just believes in being a helping hand for the college. And I feel that he's been great to the college. He is a very good family man as well. He's trying to do the best he can with life. And like Mike had said earlier, Joe has been through a lot. He has made major changes for the better, and I think also better for the college. I feel, personally, I feel that the board didn't follow the contract. And Joe should have had a better opportunity than just kick to the curb. So that's all I really have to say. I just feel that he's a good worker and that he should get a second chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Oh, I just think, thank you. Jessania Koda?
Good evening. My name is Jessania Koda, classified lead president. I'm here today on behalf of the Napa Valley College classified professionals whom fully support our colleague. It is our hope that our colleague is given a fair and equitable second chance. Our colleague is ready to return to work and be an invaluable asset to the Napa Valley College family as he once was. And I just want to repeat that it is our hope that our colleague is given a fair and equitable second chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessania. Lana Vargas?
Good afternoon, board members. I've known Joe Azvedo for probably about five years, as long as my parents have been here. My parents are Deborah Beachtree and Michael Rayford. I know Mr. Azvedo more on a personal level. I have not ever had seen Mr. Azvedo get violent with anybody at all, whether it be family, public, anything like that. As my father has stated, he was going through a very difficult time at that time. And I think America was at that time because it was post-COVID. And everybody was going through their trials and tribulations. And I just got the best of him, excuse me. I do believe that Mr. Azvedo deserves a fair chance, even though I didn't work with him on a career level. I do know that he's a very hardworking man, he's a family man, and he deserves a second chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Lana. Lauren Smith?
Hello, my name is Lauren Smith. I'm a custodian here and members of the board and campus community. I'm not here to speak on the work committed. I'm just here to speak on a man's character. Joe is one of the most valuable members of the custodial team here. He's been instrumental in training new hires, working on numerous floor projects every year, passing down tips and tricks, and speaking out when the crew has been mistreated. His expertise and knowledge is not something the facilities department and school can afford to lose, in my opinion. I'm asking that you guys allow him the chance to come back and work under new facilities director, Mr. Vargas, and make progress in the department. The custodial staff is severely understaffed, and we need his expertise and help. He has always been friendly and helpful to his colleagues and students here on the campus and is missed by more than just his fellow custodians. He has been a member of the MVC community for over a decade and deserves a chance to come back and atone for his mistake. Board members, I ask that you put aside any biases and take into consideration the recommendation from the adjustment board and the words of myself and everyone else that came to support him. Please do not let one unfortunate event erase twelve years of unproblematic service. He's taken steps to better himself, so please allow him to prove himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Is there any other public comment in this?
Yes, I'd like to address the board. Representing Mr. Azvedo, I just wanted to point out a few things about Mr. Azvedo's case. As already been stated, he's been employed with the district since 2010. He has no prior history of discipline. I believe legal counsel expressed that there may have been an issue with absences for which, but there was never risen to the level of personnel, being placed in personnel file. I don't believe Mr. Azvedo was ever counseled about his attendance. I believe that the unauthorized absence from work had to do with the incident drinking off campus during work hours. That's the unauthorized absence. That estimate, you know, we did not contest the basic facts of what happened in April of 2022. Mr. Azvedo did, as you heard, voluntarily enter an alcohol treatment program. Alcoholism is a, you know, serious disease. He has sought treatment of his own accord after being interviewed by Human Resources about that incident before any discipline charges were drafted. And he has maintained his sobriety, and the union would support a last chance agreement for him, which, while legal counsel said it's not a best practice, in my experience in six years as a labor representative, is something that is fairly common in cases where substance abuse is an issue for an employee. These are not things that we generally oppose. We do feel that people deserve second chances, especially when battling a serious illness like that. But Mr. Azvedo is getting the treatment he needs and has been sober for the duration since he was placed on leave. And we firmly believe that if returned to work, that he would be able to continue his sobriety. You know, it's been going on two years since the incident, and he has been able to maintain his sobriety that entire time. And if returned to work, we have no doubt that he would keep his treatment up and, you know, be a valuable asset here on the campus as he was once.
Thank you, Casey. Anybody else in this room? I think we do have one joining us online. Anyone else in the room right now? Catherine Martin O'Wen, can we let him in?
Yes, hello?
Hi, Martin.
Hello, I work for Student Support Services Trio. I've been on the campus for over twenty-three years and have known Joe over thirteen years. As everybody has mentioned, he's an excellent worker, very dedicated, very committed. He's always set up events for us and takes care of our students and their family members when they come to these special events on campus, always checking in with us throughout the event to make sure that we have everything we need, bringing extra tables or tables, I'm sorry, chairs and tables when necessary. Again, he is very committed to his job. It is very unfortunate that this happened. But again, he's a quality worker, and we all make mistakes. And he has been doing what he needs to do to correct himself and take care of himself. And COVID did cause a lot of problems for a lot of people, as mentioned. And I think maybe this is something that happened to Joe. But I do strongly, strongly, strongly encourage the board to give him a second chance. Again, he's very committed to be, to work. And as he mentioned, his own words, this is something he's not proud of, and this is something he regrets, and he's been doing what he needs to do to better himself. As Michael mentioned, I think he's actually in a better place now than before. So please, please, give him a second chance, and thank you.
Thank you, Martin. No more public comment. This hearing is concluded, and the board will deliberate on this matter and close session. We're going to return from closed session and report out. So on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the district terminated a custodian. The employee appealed under the process set out in the collective bargaining agreement. After hearing, the adjustment board provided a recommendation to the Board of Trustees that the district reinstate the employee. In closed session, the board, five out of six to one, with trustees Rios, trustee Dodd, trustee Baker, and trustee Deluna, trustee Olson, and trustee Iverson, supporting with trustee Kishneff, not supporting, took action to reject the hearing officer's recommendation. So at this point, I will, we will have the matter closed. And there's nothing else to report out on closed session. So we're going to move ahead.
Just a quick question from the board. Your vote is to reject the hearing officer's recommendation meeting or accepting the adjustment panel? Or are you upholding the termination or are you reinstating the employee?
We're upholding that termination. Any other questions on that? Okay. So now we'll move to item six, public comment general. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Catherine, do you have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, you. Moving on to seven-one. Recognition of service for our former board chair, Jeff Dodd. Jeff, I have a little something for you here. I'll let you take it out of my state. The board wanted to recognize you for your two years of service as board chair. And what you helped steer the board and the district through some tough times and also saw some pretty big wins for us. So we commend you and appreciate all of your service over the last two years. All right. So thank you, trustee Dodd, again. So we are going to move to eight-point-one, approval of the consent calendar. Does any trustee have any questions on the consent calendar? Do we need to pull anything?
Move approval.
All those in favor? Aye. Consent calendar passes unanimously.
Baker and Olson.
Okay, nothing on item nine. Number ten, resources information. Ten-point-one, action item acceptance of Napa Valley College Faculty Association, CCA, CTA, NEA, revised initial proposal for negotiations for new contract starting July one, twenty-twenty-four. Is there any public comment, Catherine?
No, there is not.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Vote for acceptance. I'll second.
Trustee Rios made the motion with trustee Kishneff seconding. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next action item, ten-point-two, adoption of the Napa Valley Community College District and Napa Valley College Faculty Association. CCA, CTA, NEA, initial proposal for reopening negotiations for contract starting July one, twenty-twenty-four. Any public comment?
No, I have no public comment.
Motion to adopt the proposal.
A motion by trustee Dodd during the second.
Second.
Second by trustee Olson. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Eleven, twelve, thirteen. Administrative services information. This is our unrestricted general fund eleven, operating fund revenues and expenditures budget updates as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Mr. Jim Reeves?
Thank you, President Iverson. This is the Fund eleven report that we provide to you once a month. You'll notice in the upper right corner behind my picture, it says six out of twelve. So we're fifty percent of the budget in this report. So again, as you look down that right column, if you wanted to do a really quick analysis about where we are relative to budget, that fifty percent should, certainly on the expenditure side, generally align with fifty percent. Though that is never perfect, and there are some timing issues there. But that said, we'll look to our revenues. Our revenues are at sixty-one percent of budget. You'll remember last month, they were at around six percent of budget. So clearly, many people have paid their first installment of their property taxes, and we realize the benefit of that. The federal income is still not showing. We're not expecting a lot, but it's not showing. State income is at fifty-seven percent. Again, state income, we expect to be in decline over the next, certainly the short term. As most of you are seeing, the state budget is not as robust as it once was. So these in Fund eleven, state income in Fund eleven, are largely related to our enrollments and the available funds from the state. Fortunately, our property taxes remain healthy, and they are much more stable than state revenues. And that was one of the advantages that the board considered when it moved to a property, a community-based institution. So while we're not completely insulated, I think certainly the projections for property tax seem to be fairly stable as opposed to state revenues. Other financing sources are doing okay, so we're at sixty-one percent. We're about two-point-four million dollars ahead of where we were last year at this point in terms of revenue. And salaries, we're, the total you'll notice, we're at forty-six percent. We're still seeing some trending below budget for full-time faculty, which suggests that we have a few fewer full-time faculty than we anticipated at the planning point. And minus conjecture, but certainly the numbers are suggesting that we're backfilling some of those vacant, full-time faculty with part-time positions. So you can see that's at fifty-six percent right now. The total salaries are running at forty-six percent, or about one million dollars at this point under budget. So there is, that's trending, certainly the variance, there is a positive variance, and we're trending in a positive direction. Employee benefits are just about right on target at forty-nine percent. Hooks and supplies are at forty-five percent. Again, those tend to be timing purchases related to just before the beginning of each semester. So those will be, should be relatively stable into the early spring. The numbers are fairly small there, but we are, we're on target there, I would say. The other areas, total operating expenditures are at forty-nine percent. The two areas we've talked about in the past, one hundred and eleven percent for, or one hundred and fifty percent for rentals. That's a reclass because we now have to record software subscriptions. That's a reclass because we now have to record uh software subscriptions as a rental. Um, and then a hundred and eleven percent on dues and memberships. We're at about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars um above uh where we were last year. That's an interesting number, uh, I want to get you a little more detail on that. Um, to see what we're doing there, because we're 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 trending a little, a little higher than we thought. The variance today is only thirteen thousand. They say thirteen thousand only relative to the size of our budget, it's fairly nominal, but it's worth looking at. So but we are trending in a positive direction there. Capital outlay is largely due to um, due to timing issues, seventy percent of budget. Uh, I'm not too concerned yet as as we're halfway through the year and many of these expenditures in this capital area have already been made. In total, we're at about forty-seven percent of our expenditures this year. So we're on target and running at about, we're running uh about two, let's see. About one point six million dollars less in expenditures than at this time last year. So that's all very positive. Um, so so long and short of it is, we uh we're we're trending in the right direction at fifty percent through our fiscal year. I will share with you that there have been some additional expenses and some revenues, slight revenue adjustment. That I want to present to you as a proposed budget adjustment as early as next uh as next month. So at that, I would, I would uh conclude my report with, should you, should you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Go for it.
Um, just a couple of questions. Um, I know that we're trending, uh, still trending low on sal- overall salaries, but I'm just wondering. The uh temporary part-time that is over and above permanent uh in terms of what was projected. Is that something that will resolve as positions are filled or is that going to continue to be a trend?
If if we were to hire um, for example, a full-time faculty to begin the spring term, which is a little late, frankly, it would increase the number. But I would say that the number we want to look at, and I'm gonna look to Dr. Moore now, is how much um, how much part-time faculty we'll be utilizing for the spring semester. So that could change that trend line a bit based on uh on on how how many more or how few are part-time faculty we use in the spring.
And I had another question, I'll I'll let you respond first.
Uh, we have, I believe it's four time faculty who are on leave, so those are unanticipated um in some cases. Who were on leave in fall, uh, three now in spring, so we need to backfill those with part-timers.
But if they're on leave, aren't they still being paid?
They are being paid, but they're coming from the full-time salary um budget, but we need to have the part-timers cover their classes.
Oh, okay.
So that's an additional expense in the part-time budget.
And then my second question was returning to the subject of the rentals and that they being software. So we're a hundred and fifty percent, is that um? Is that based on one-time? Like contracts that were or that were paid like one time in the first half of the year? Or is that number going to continue to exceed it past a hundred and fifty?
It it. It may see some some additional expense based on when the renewal for that software occurred. But we're at about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand increase there just because of the software rentals. And it's largely a reclass for another part of the budget. So that's why we're not seeing a big variance in the total here is because we actually switched where we're actually reporting it.
Okay, so that'll get corrected in next year's budget?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, next is an action item. Or no, I'm sorry, information fourteen point one, board policies, first reading. This is information item. Do we have any, Catherine?
No, I have no comments. These uh both came out of Academic Senate. These recommended changes.
Uh, so action fourteen point two, board policies, chapter three, review. These are second reading. Is there any public comment? A public comment?
No public comment.
We have a motion.
Make a motion.
Baker made the motion with Olson second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Action fourteen point three, board policy revisions, second reading. Any public comment, Catherine?
No public comment on.
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion my trustee Dodd, do I have a second? Second by trustee Rios. Any discussion, you guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And go to reports. Fifteen point one, start with associated students of Napa Valley College report. Fifteen point two, Priya Shorma, president, we have a report.
Yes, not here, I actually don't have any of the constituent group presidents present. And neither the the union presidents also.
So no reports for classified Senate report. Danielle Alexander. No reports for fifteen point four classified association report, that was just Samia Koda, president. And fifteen point five administrative confidential, no report. Christine Tapia, president. Academic Senate report, fifteen point six, no report. Fifteen point seven Faculty Association report, no report. So we'll move to president and board reports, sixteen point one.
Yes, um, I'll begin with the academic affairs report. So there are three areas I wanted to report on. The first is just as I regularly do, give you an update on enrollment. Um, the most momentous thing this week is that classes began yesterday, so that's very exciting. Um, we are seeing that we're about as we were in fall, seeing a small uptick in enrollment. Um, you can see head counts also slightly higher. You'll see a discrepancy and you'll continue to see this between credit being more positive and non-credit having a negative um number. And that's mainly because non-credit, um, we have a supervised tutoring course where the rosters don't get reconciled until later on the semester through positive attendance. So you're gonna continue to see that, that's not reflective of the final numbers. Um, one thing you'll also notice, and and you may recall some discussion about our efforts to ensure that. The spaces that we have available to students are being provided to actual students instead of those students. So in the December report, we were showing higher enrollment. The we had drops that occurred right at the beginning of the year to make sure students coming in had those spaces. So these numbers are slightly lower than they were in December. That's not a reflection, we believe, of the actual enrollment, but cleaning up rosters to remove those ghost students. Um, and then you'll also notice in the second bullet there that we still have space in many classes. Um, we also have late start options for students who are coming in a bit later. Or they are in their classes and they notice it's not the right class for them and they can move into another class. So there are still spaces available. We had another momentous thing this week, which was uh spring flex day, that took place on Tuesday. Um, our flex days are two days in fall, one day in spring. What was really wonderful, I particularly about this flex day, I think, is just the collaboration that occurred among the groups to help with this on. There has been, from what I understand, a period when um not all the groups were able to participate or contribute in the same way. So this is a really positive um day that started off with a wonderful set of um presentations in the PAC. The sessions were well-attended, they were interactive, and I think that they really contributed toward the feeling of community for those who attended. And I wanted to especially acknowledge our um leadership among our various groups. So Matt Conter as Academic Senate President, Catherine Bosque as the Chair of the Faculty Professional Development Committee. Danielle Alexander in her classified role um as president and Christine Tapia for the administrative confidential group. And then Carrie Six um rounded out a panel presentation representing the students. So it was really a wonderful day for all of us. The last thing I wanted to update you on is the educational master plan. So um some of the objectives you may remember from the beginning of our work. We wanted to ensure that the plan is actionable, equity-focused, and data-driven. We want to make sure that it aligns with our mission, vision, and values. And now that we have that updated version, that is very, very helpful in helping us move forward with our work. We want to continue to have engagement, input, and ownership from all the groups. So in the fall, we um conducted a number of input session, focus groups, and surveys, and we had a lot of engagement from each of those. And this plan, as a reminder, is to cover the five-year period from twenty-four to twenty-nine. And then based on all of that work in the fall semester, which was mainly the data gathering and constituent input period. Um, there are five main themes that have arisen from those conversations and input. And the first is enrollment stabilization. The second equitable student outcomes. The third, culture and climate. The fourth, infrastructure and fiscal sustainability. And the fifth, program alignment with regional labor market needs. You'll notice perhaps a striking similarities to some of our other documents, including the board goals as well as the mission, vision, and values. And what we really want to to do is make sure that it reflects all of the work that we are, have already begun working on and will continue to work on in the future. So um during the flex day, we had a session on the EMP and we had input again uh on where we are with that draft. And you can see the next steps, we're getting close to getting this to you. And I know you're very interested in seeing what we are um working on. So from this month until March, we're working on the development of the draft. In the month of March, the draft will be shared, it might come out late February, but through the month of March. Um, to all of the constituent groups to give another round of input um on that. And then uh our goal is to provide two readings for you to review um the draft as well. So we're really excited about this uh development. The EMP is going to be a very important document to help us see uh where we are headed in the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and community, happy. Oh, yeah, okay, it's fine, I'll, we, I have a report, but um I didn't get up there, that's fine, I'll, I'll um go ahead and just um go off my case and then you'll get that report. Um, just want to wish everybody a um a happy new year and a uh amazing start to the semester, hopefully enjoy in the beginning. Um, wanna just provide a couple of updates around what we're doing in student affairs, some of the work we've been involved with over this um this past uh. Couple of weeks since we've been back and um to work. Um, the I think the number one thing we've been working on student affairs specifically is um in the areas of enrollment. We uh have actively been working latitively, um, you know, one-stop-shop uh registration. Activity days that we've offered to the community of our students. Um, this one-stop-shop registration um activities or activities we've had is really collaboration with the missions and records. The Welcome Center, counseling, financial aid, um, and other support areas as well. What we've done is we um in the Welcome Center specifically, we um had all of our representatives there supporting students um leading to the community. With helping them to literally fill out their application to the college, to um any health domain, financial aid. Um, and select courses, so really being intentional about making sure our students can get that connection um with our staff immediately when they come onto campus. Um, and you know, what the research shows around the one-stop-shop um experience for students is that. Indeed, it does help with the success, but the number one takeaway from that is students feel connected right away. Um, that's definitely a line that welcome is critical around the one-stop-shop experience. So something that we are doing, we're very proud of um in student affairs. So we had one-stop-shop registration days. We had one on January ninth, and the tenth, and sixteen, and seventeen. Um, and again, started officially at the four o'clock in the afternoon and run it to seven. Um, so to really address the the um evening um hours and and making sure that we're open to to um our community. Those who may have been a bit driven earlier in the day. Um, so we're continuing to build that and to really develop that and hopefully make that part of what we do in that college, to have that one-stop-shop. Um, experience, not just in a physical way, but in a virtual way. So working um with our new PIO team, we um established how that'll look um on on the website as well. Um, student affairs is also teeing out, looking really closely with um River Trail Village. Specifically, we're working to ensure to have a successful onboard experience. Um, we want this to be successful in your your school trajectory. Specifically, we're working with enrollment services, financial aid, basic gigs to provide, sponsoring, and other programs to. Again, make sure that that onboarding experience from great beginning um is is it's helpful for students, is successful, and we can really promote our our uh our housing programs. So by collaboration, um, um, Robin Argangelo has been doing that for a very some time, but we're being now broadly with student affairs. It's a great site to to support all those efforts. And my last um piece of what I wanted to read today tonight is we are having our first annual Mariachi festival. So of course, we have flyers for you, so we're gonna pass those now. But this is uh collaboration with my office, Office of Affairs, um, Happy Valley College District Facility Services Foundation, PAF. Um, and this year we'll be offering the festival April fifth through the seventh. So it's, it's three days versus our our historical one day or two days. Um, this year, we're gonna be working collaboratively with our new school district and offer work or offer a matinee to our local schools. So bringing the campus, um, the K through twelve partners. And we'll be able to experience the Mariachi um small mic for them on Friday morning. Um, in addition, we're gonna go back to the workshop model, like we offered the first year, when we offered the Mariachi festival. So we're gonna open up a free workshop to the community to participate for anybody from the community who wants to learn about Mariachi music and performance. So that's exciting. Um, and another, I'm being excited piece that we're we're partnering with the music department this year to offer Music Two Eighty, which is instrumental performance seminar. For our locals to to wanna learn about Mariachi um here at my college, because we're all in this far as Mariachi perform. Um, at the Mariachi Festival on the sixth, so we'll be actually sitting on the second, if they choose. Um, we'll be able to to do that on stage, so we're very excited about that. Um, you'll see that we are bringing back our back popular demand, our Las Vegas group, Mariachi of Pariadis. Uh, our most popular group is amazing, they'll be coming back, Mariachi, like that, from uh Sooing, Nevada. And then we are gonna be um bringing a local high school, Mariachi here from Vegas. So we hope you can join us. Um, and again, the the goal of this is to not only promote art, but also to collaborate with the community. So our community members, we've seen that the Mariachi is another way, through the Mariachi perhaps, to to um to enter into education and to be successful. That could be very important.
Doctor Guerrero, I have a question. Can you tell me us more about the instrument petting zoo?
Uh, yes, the instrument petting zoo is a very cool concept. Um, that we basically, um, our our students, our K through twelve partners have the um ability to learn about music. Um, but also like pick up the instruments and hold on to them, um, kind of check them out. Um, so hopefully inspire their their interest by kind of the hands-on experience. Really meant for um our our local schools to experience music in a different way, tactile, right? So um we, this is something that our partners have done and it's been very successful. So we're excited to be able to offer a Mariachi petting zoo, uh, which I don't know if there's many of those out there, but we'll be, we'll be doing it here on campus.
A brief report from uh Administrative Services, uh, as you look at the at the report, I think I've spent it uh um. Uh, some good time on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, excuse me, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Gotta correct that. Institutional technology, we are making reasonable progress, we still have some hiccups. Yesterday was uh one of those hiccups when we lost our self-service module that students access, many access. For um for several hours, uh, so we are working with our team to see how we can avoid those little hiccups that that create uh. Uh, unexpected disruptions in in service, so and at a critical time, no less. We we are making some some progress here. We did um agree with Alucian to extend the service of some of their implementation team members. Uh, as a result of of discovering some issues that were not apparent when they did their initial assessment. We're covering those, uh, that additional expense with some savings in other parts of the IT budget. And from some resources that the Chancellor's Office is giving us for IT security. Student housing, uh I I think I just noticed the typo. We didn't put in the number of applications, which are two-twenty-six. That's the second paragraph. Uh, we do have, which is a slight increase. This is this is as of January seventh, uh with fifty-six inquiries being uh currently pursued. Um, significant issues that we continue to work on are food support for the students in res- in residence and and some of the wraparound services that will be required of students to to further support their their occupants on campus. I would finally add um um that uh we've convened a uh a team of folks uh focused on marketing and outreach specific to our housing program. And we've included uh our own team, Rod on campus, including the Martin Group, Vols Group, and um and there's someone else there. I don't remember now, uh Gray Star, uh who all have marketing pieces, but we we needed to be sure we we had a consistent message and that we weren't duplicating efforts and that we're taking advantage of all the opportunities, both electronically and in person. So um Dr. Guerrero was on that team uh and and several folks on our campus. So um and that meets weekly. We've insisted on some urgency here. So uh it'll be interesting to see i- if these numbers start to to jump here pretty quickly. Our Y Education Center uh is about uh there's a groundbreaking not scheduled yet. They're they're waiting on me to finish up some details on our Kitchell, our Kitchell agreement with um or uh uh construction management. Uh, but you can look forward to a groundbreaking there in uh certainly this spring at some point. A report on district auxiliary services, um both um DAS and the the Vidiculture and Y uh Technology Foundation are uh putting together ad hoc committee, ad hoc committees to review the revised agreement uh this spring. Um, let me just go back to the housing. There is a there is a um request out there. Board members to uh save the day for ribbon cutting. And also um and also a walk of the building in the next few weeks. So we'll get some some specific in information there. It's exciting to walk through the buildings. Uh, now they look like a place you might want to live. Um, so uh we'll get you more information on those. Facilities, we're pleased to announce and welcome Mr. Miguel Vargas as the new Director of Facilities Services. Miguel began work uh with the college on January third. Miguel brings with him uh some twenty years of experience doing facilities, energy management, rhythm work uh with the military, mostly in air force bases. He most recently served at the Veterans Center in Yottville, is it in Yottville? As the um Director of Finance. And uh he had, he has experience with facilities operations in that area as well. An AA in construction uh technology, a BA in business, an MBA, and he's working at an MBA and he's working on a a master's in uh strategic leadership. So uh we're very excited about he joining us. We have a lot of work for him and he is hit the ground running. Let me just give you a a report on the Ash landfill topic that is uh certainly uh in front of us relative to our student housing. We have uh we're close to an agreement with the county on on exactly what the measures will be required for the interim uh closure agreement. Um, we are in the final hours, I I hope. Um, and uh we look forward to having certainly that in place well before our students occupy that building. And that would be the conclusion of my report.
Good evening, um trustees, and happy new year, albeit that we are almost done with the month of January, which scares me because of the amount of work that we have to accomplish. We are, um thank you for approving and accepting the sunshine articles this evening. We will begin bargaining with our classified union uh professionals um very soon in in February as their contract expires um at the end of this uh fiscal year. Additionally, we are actively bargaining with our faculty association and we look forward to returning to the table to continue our conversations. We're continuing our discussions um through mutual gates with our administrative senate. In HR, we are always looking for ways to become more efficient. And we are ready to implement our perform, which is a module from our Neo and uh platform. Form will allow us to conduct all of our performance evaluations online. Um, and no surprise, we're in twenty twenty-four. Um, we're just catching up to twenty twelve. Um, so we're super excited to um implement this and get this going and continue our conversations around performance evaluations with our administrative confidential staff, mid-class five officials. And once we test it out, I'll be working with um Dr. Moore on how we can perhaps utilize the system elsewhere. Training development, we just recently held our fourth um special development with our administrative confidential staff. We've had four sessions building on of the foundational learning of DIA. And even though that this was a fourth, it's not the last. This whole goal was to provide foundational learning of what this work means and how we can build on it. I just recently had a conversation with um Dr. Musami um in creating a strategy on how we can continue to move forward and build on top of the foundation that's been provided. Our managers are not the only ones that will be getting this training. We're also working with um consultants to develop training for our classified professionals. So they also will receive training to provide foundational learning of how this work is, what it means to us and how we are all responsible for this work. Our key's training, um we will be releasing our key's training, which is our one-year manager's training that'll be coming out in the next month. And you see why I'm worried that we're already through uh January. We have so much to do. Uh, our recruitment, um we have had eight new hires so far. We have not in progress. What is very important for you all to know is we are continuing to pilot the blind application process. We will be sending out a survey to all of those that are participated in recent recruitments utilizing this process to determine the um whether or not this is working to increase the number of um diversity within our inter- those terms of our interview and thus um for hire. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, board. Uh, I'm here to give your monthly update on accreditation. So this is um now the timeline basically moving from uh where we are now uh through when the ACCJC will notify us of the action that will be taken on our follow-up report and site visit. So um you hopefully will recall that we had um preliminary drafts of all of the responses to the six college requirements that were shared with the campus community last semester, and you all received through Dr. Powell um the entire um draft of that uh in December. Um, we are now actively engaged in updating all of those responses to reflect rather than September, October, November, when those were drafted. Uh, what what um the state of affairs is as of uh January. So um I've been uh working on that um constantly. I think it is since you guys have been um uh convened, I sent Dr. Powell two more updated drafts for his review. He's probably sick of being bombarded by my emails. Um, so we uh have already uh so in December, we began posting the updated responses as well as the associated evidence so that the campus community could review it. Um, I worked with the Alucian folks uh in IT to um identify the most appropriate and secure mechanism for posting that. And so we are doing that through Microsoft Teams. Um, let's see. So as indicated on that first green row, um we've um a- as of yesterday, I posted two of the updated responses. Um, today we did another one. So um college requirement four has been updated and posted for the campus community. Um, my goal is to have the um completely re-hauled um updated version available to send out to extended cabinet uh by end of the day tomorrow. Uh, they do have a meeting scheduled for uh for Tuesday. And uh so I'm going to give them time to sufficient time to uh read and engage with the updated version. Um, then we'll um shift over to the evidence side to get that posted. Um, so we will be collecting feedback as we did on the uh preliminary uh drafts in the fall. We'll be collecting feedback from the campus community that has already begun, but it will go extend through uh early February. We will be collecting signatures uh for the certification page from our um constituent group leaders and uh Dr. Powell, myself, Fazallo and um Trustee Iverson, you will be uh as the board uh president, you will be asked to sign that as well at your February meeting. So we will have the February report as an action item for you all at that time. So um that February fifteenth date is approval by you all. Um, so then we have between um the middle of February and by March first is when our uh report is due. So we have that a couple of week period to get it all submitted to the ACCJC. Um, work will continue even after that submission because that's the nature of accreditation, uh ongoing continuous improvement. So anything that is um that occurs between submission of the report or whatever the snapshot date is and um when we submit it and and when the team comes um that that site visit is scheduled for April eighth. Um, then we'll uh my office will compile additional information and have that available for the team to consider um as the snapshot as of the site visit. Um, the commission is scheduled for um meeting uh June fifth through seventh of this year. We are officially so that just yesterday, the ACCJC informed all of the um the institutions uh that were whose reports were considered at the January meeting. They notified all of them of their action taken in January. So we are officially on deck in that the next um convening of the commission will involve our report and site visit. Um, so that that will happen in early June and then we expect notification. I I think this tough turnaround was within two weeks, which is the fastest I think that it's been. Um, they are required um by federal uh accreditation rules that uh have to notify us within thirty days of the convening and the action that's taken by the commission. Finally, I've incorporated just a little um note and uh link there for you all. Um, you might recall that in November and December, there were some actions that you took that involved um discontinuation of three um instructional programs. And then add the mission, vision and value statements. And those are considered, those uh fall under um the substantive change uh policy of the uh accrediting commission. And so we are required to um submit a form notifying them of those changes. I did that the day after you all took action in both um November and December, and they have um thanked us for notifying them. We don't need to do a larger substantive change report in a s- in connection with those. Uh, the email uh and the form submission was sufficient for them. And so their letters acknowledging those changes um are posted on that uh link. It's at the bottom of the page. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. Thank you, members of cabinet. Uh, just a few quick things for me. Want to first start off by saying congratulations to our men's basketball team who got their first win of the season last night against Solano College. Um. It's okay. We're going to focus on the one, not the sixteen. Yes. Um, congrats and congrats on the women's basketball team, although they did lose to Solano. They had a uh five-game streak before that. So uh women's basketball is really kicking butt. Um, on Tuesday, I had the chance to share comments at the Flex Day. And the theme of my comments were really uh reflection and momentum. And I think that's been really present in the uh cabinet reports today, this sense of energy and momentum. Uh, while also being reflective of all of the work that has been conducted uh at this institution for quite some time. Um, and then most specifically, a lot of the really good work that's been happening over the last two or three years or so. Um. We had an interesting uh factoring piece of information coming out of the EMP, and that was uh reflections from our students in terms of their overall perceptions of the college. And what we found through the EMP is that our students have an incredibly high uh sense of 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 well-regard for the institution and the college, but members of the campus community don't. And it's really interesting, I think, because of all the things that have been associated with the college at times, we've internalized to some degree um elements of the college and just how good we are. And you know, the the real theme of of this semester was you know, really acknowledging and standing in the work that has been uh the quality work that's been going on on this campus for years and that continues to persist and only gets better. Uh, as we get even better as an institution, it really identifying our goals and working collaboratively with members of the campus community and the external community. And that external community is really part of, you know, one of the themes that we'll continue to see uh as we move into this next semester. You know, I I was at the uh foundation holiday party, they shared some reflections and thoughts on what our priorities are as an institution and how as a community college, the focus on really providing, you know, basic needs for students, addressing, you know, their their food security, their housing security, their transportation, uh their mental health. These four areas are so critical and essential for us as an institution uh in promoting student success, which is often times, these are the things that detract from students' abilities to really be successful in the classroom. So as we gear up and and really uh build and establish or strengthen some of the existing relationships we have with our partners in the community. You know, we are actively looking at ways to support students in these four areas. Uh, we had a dynamic great meeting yesterday. Trustee Olson was there with us uh with clinical aid to discuss ways that we can partner and collaborate uh very innovatively towards holistic student success. And as we look towards engaging additional uh organizations within the community, that will continue to be our theme um as we really work in intentional ways towards promoting a holistic student success by promoting uh the full student. Um, last piece I just want to want to throw out is 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 a thank you to the team as always. Um, this year has started off really good. You know, our momentum and our energy uh as reflected by uh what we, you know, what we wait. Just the energy within, you know, the flex day and all of the presentations really, I think, demonstrates the uh the campuses growing and strengthening ability to work as a unit and do some really awesome stuff. So thank you for your leadership in that space. And thank you, trustee, for your continued leadership and support towards helping consider our direction. And with that, we conclude our presidency report.
I feel like we haven't heard from Terry yet. Does Terry have anything he wants to share for our PIO? Rob, sorry. I was reading a report. Okay. Thank you. And I'll I'll get it right next time. I apologize. Um, we're gonna move on to sixteen point two, standing committee and on our appointment reports. This will be for December. I don't, do we have anything from DAS? Uh, anything from VWP? Audit and finance, did that last month? Um, and McPherson distinguished teaching award, no. And Chank and then rural property, nothing. So trustee and board chair report sixteen point four. We'll start with you, trustee Kishner.
I don't have much to report, but I did attend the Martin Luther King Junior March in Vallejo on Monday. It was hosted by the Vallejo chapter of the NAACP, and I wanted to give a shout out to Patricia Hunter, the new uh chair of the Vallejo chapter of the NAACP who took control in March of last year. She deserves a lot of credit for her presidency and I know the city of Vallejo appreciates her.
Thank you, trustee Delina. Trustee Olson.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to share that we are two weeks away, a little over two weeks away from our seventh annual um Black History Month celebration. Uh, this year it'll be held on February third at Crosswalk Church. Um, there we there's gonna be keynote by a professor from Sonoma State, um Patrick Johnson, um land and labor acknowledgement. And we have some American Canyon High Black Student Union um speakers um and dinner from Buster's, which is always And we have some American Canyon High Black Student Union, um, speakers, um, and dinner from Buster's, which is always, um, amazing. So I, I can send this out if anybody's interested, interested in seeing the flyer. Oh, and I was also wanted to share that Dr. T Madison is going to be the emcee this year.
Nice. Thank you. Uh, trustee Rios. Trustee Baker.
Um, just want to say happy new year to everyone. It seems a little weird to be saying it because I already feels like it's been a year since. But, uh, I, I just wanted to note, I kind of feel like a little low energy in here. I know you guys are tired probably from starting this semester, but just wanted to, uh, offer, uh, um, a little encouragement. Uh, I have, uh, I wanted, uh, today I was in a training and somebody shared this quote from a book called Emergent Strategy by Adrianne Marie Brown. And I thought it, it actually made me think quite a bit about, uh, the college because we've been undergoing so much change in the last, uh, year, two years. And I know that can be really wearing on people. Uh, so I thought I would share this. This is, um, the everything is about relationships, critical connections, chaos is an essential process that we need to engage. The sharing of information is fundamental for organizational success and vision is an invisible field that binds us together, emerging from relationships and chaos and information. So I, I sometimes feels like the chaos is going to really drag you down, but it's part of the process. So appreciate all of the hard work that you all do.
I just want to thank you, trustee Dodd.
Part of the process. I am. I, I eat chaos.
That's another good point. Uh, okay. Uh, I have no report either. I want to thank you guys all for working through me. It's been a while up here. So working through the Kings, but started off with a tough meeting, but I think we handled it well and looking forward to a good year. Uh, so we'll move to seventeen organizational items. This is the appointing of trustee members to board committees, their action items. I don't see any change on the committees. I've talked to you guys on it. So seventeen point two. So one of the first things, I'm going to eliminate the real property committee. Haven't really had a need. We haven't met. Can always bring it back if there's a need down the road. So we're going to eliminate the real property committee for seventeen point two. This will be DAS. Talked to Inez and Jenny and Jenny is going to, um, be our trustee on the DAS. District Auxiliary Services Foundation Board. And I will just run down that seventeen point three, DWT, Rafael Rios is going to stay on that. I guess I should be asking promotions. I'm going to do all these and then I'll ask for a motion. Do them all.
It's your choice.
Well, and ask for a motion in a second, guys. So we'll do them, we'll do that at the end. So DWT, we're going to keep trustee Rios, the Napvalley College Foundation Board. I'm going to keep trustee Dodd. Uh, in terms of audit and finance committee, I'm going to remove myself and trustee Deluna has ecstatically said she will take my spot on audit and finance committee. So I thank you for that. Uh, McPherson distinguished teaching award, um, Jenny, if you want to still do it, not doing that, I'm happy to not on. Thank you. Uh, and then Ed Chank, oh, you Jason, unless you want to do both that and Jefferson. Happy to. Up to you. Andy's on audit and finance. You've got audit and finance. You would take McPherson if you want to do it. You haven't done it yet. Up to you. Okay. So trustee Kishner will give McPherson and me, Dr. Ed Chank. And I will fill in for anyone that can't make their meetings. Just give me a heads up. Um, so with those changes, I will accept, uh, a motion for items seventeen point two, seventeen point three and seventeen point four.
More approval, second.
Thank you, trustee Rios with the motion, trustee Dodd second, all those in favor. Hi.
Hi.
And no continuing to close session. Announcement of future meetings will be the day after Valentine's Day, two fifteen, twenty, twenty-three. And I will adjourn the meeting at seven ten. Was that interesting start?